I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Father, we come before you tonight and we thank you and praise you for this town. And we thank you, Lord, that you set in order, uh, rules and laws. And we thank you that we want to keep this in order and do what you've called us to do in this town and make this town a great place to live. We want to give you glory for this town and Jesus man.
Do you raise your all com?
No, sir.
May I have more? Jason?
Yes.
Ms. Brenda?
Here.
Mr. Dennis?
Here.
Ms. Nancy?
Yes.
Mr. Knight?
Come here.
Ms. Franky?
Please approve the minute. Everything on that?
Nancy?
Yes.
Mr. Dennis?
Yes.
Ms. Nancy?
Yes.
Ms. Franky?
Yes.
Through the financial report.
Um, I would like to say, um, we did not get November done. We got bank statements on Friday last weekend. Pam came down with strep throat and she's been helping me reconcile the accounts.
Uh-huh.
Um, so we were able to get September done and we were able to get October done and we will start on November next week. And November, December will be done before the board meeting.
Okay, oh, okay, so all we have is just October here.
September, well, September and then we finished, we just printing reports for October because we balance October.
Okay, alright.
Okay, approve bill three things.
Yeah.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the financial report as what we have is finished at this time.
Yes.
My second.
Go, go.
Okay. Ms. Brenda?
Yes.
Mr. Dennis?
Yes.
Ms. Nancy?
Yes.
Ms. Franky?
Yes.
Alright, now we've had the bill three things.
Uh, I'm just, uh, talking to Rex through past due invoice, tell me what's, uh, what's this about?
That was an invoice that I got an email on that week. It was from around the first of September that had not been paid. So I went ahead and paid it with the current invoice that I was paying to get it cleared up.
So it shouldn't have been paid in September?
It should have been paid in September.
You got, uh, you got two of these.
Where is that? Oh, I saw it.
Uh, one of them was the, uh, the one was the passive invoice, the other two were the regular invoices where they ordered chemicals. They just came, the statement came due before the board meeting and I wanted to make sure they weren't late.
On this, uh, Van Broccoli, that same case, Rex wrote, that passed you, what?
It was one that came due, um, before the board meeting, so we went ahead and, the, the stuff that came due that, where we got the statements and the statements were due by the tenth or by the fifteenth, I had to go ahead and get those out so we could get them in by the due dates. We also have another addendum that I gave you to the bills to be paid that, um, are not on this list. Those things that we've taken care since I sent the packets out.
I have a question about, uh, city beautification, huh?
Yes.
What all was that?
Okay, um, that is the work that was done, I'm not exactly down on Main, down Main Street down here to get all of the lights and everything working to make it safer because it was a very unsafe condition down there at the gazebo, is it?
It's all that wiring that was done. There's been, the OSHA, when OSHA came in, they were gonna find us if we didn't get it done. And Frankie and Bill
We had to go in there and strip it.
Did the work so that we could get it done and timely.
Much cheaper.
We didn't wait about three or four months if they hadn't done it.
We had stripped everything out, we had stripped everything out, saw it all over and even put in, what we found after getting in there, we had to rewire the back of the clinic. They had, they were running all of that on the clinic electric.
Now, is Mr. Volker, is he an electrician? He is an electrician?
He is a Volker.
Okay.
I'm listening.
But, but I thought if you were, uh, an electrician, so you weren't?
She called Kay.
We got, we gotta know Kay on that in order to get it done for us to do decorating for the holidays.
Who, who done that? Who'd you talk to?
We talked to the auditors.
You talked to Kay?
Kay.
No, we didn't talk, did y'all? I didn't talk to Kay, we talked to Ben and Kathy.
We talked to Ben.
Are you not supposed to be paying your people that, uh, that are giving you on the floor?
But, uh, you approved it.
Yes.
You approved it. I don't view, I was skeptical about it. I didn't, I wasn't gonna do it.
No, you didn't say you was gonna thirty-five hundred.
No, no.
You didn't do that, no.
You, you point blank, you're gonna do it.
I said, no, I did not, no.
Yes, you did. I'm not sure that'll be yes tonight.
I guarantee you, I did not. No, sir. Not for thirty-five hundred dollars.
You approved it?
No, no.
You signed the check?
Yeah, I know, I did, but I'm saying, I didn't approve, I didn't see this until tonight.
You didn't see the check till tonight?
I, I didn't see it, no.
I phoned Bank for me, probably the check and see who would have signed it, I'm not sure. I, I believe in him and Mr. Dennis for signing checks at the moment.
I may have signed it, but I didn't catch it because, you know, you're not supposed to be hired by the city. You're, you're all of them.
Well, Mr. Bill brought me his bill first and he said that Frankie did a lot more work than he did.
Okay.
And we, that one was-
A week longer on it than-
Yes, and that one was approved and then when I got Frankie's bill, it was only for a whole nother week's worth of work, it was only five hundred more dollars. And, I mean, he told, I, they, there was a conversation about, well, Mr. Bill's getting paid to be down there doing all that because they were down there all week long.
Three and a, three and a half weeks.
Yes. And it was a huge project and if, if costumers or somebody like that would have done it, it would have cost us a lot more money and we would not have been able to get it done before the Christmas parade and being able to decorate for the holidays. But it was, I was told to cut those checks for those, for Mr. Frankie and Mr. Bill.
Well, if we signed the check, I guess, uh, we, we paid it. We paid up.
I was just questioning.
Yes, ma'am. The other page that you have are the bills that are not on the first page and they're things that we found. We were, um, going through some of the older months and reconciling things because we were looking for some balances that had been carried over from month to month that shouldn't have been. Um, and we were trying to figure out why they were being carried over, so we came across these things and noticed that they had not been approved, so we wanted to make sure y'all saw these as well.
But they've already been paid.
They were paid on the dates listed next to, um, the expense. But we called and asked the auditors and because they weren't budgetary items, they didn't have to be approved by you. And she said for us to make a list of them and bring these forth and either get them approved or disapproved, whatever we're gonna do, so that we have a record that they did come before y'all.
I don't mind, no mileage here. What I've done, I took the two hundred dollars, the, uh, uh, that, my expense and then the other was the mileage that was above the two hundred dollars expense, that's what they paid me. The two hundred expense count I get, I took that off on mileage, sixty-five cents a mile. And then the mower here, they tore the mower up, had by parts and, uh, Donnie and I went to my shop and done this work and couldn't get nobody to do it. And that was what I done. The three sixty-seven, man, that's my part.
That was your pay for doing the work?
Uh.
Is that your pay for doing the work?
Part of it was labor and part of it was, it was art, was iron and stuff, not furnace. But we couldn't get nobody to do it, the mower, and we needed a mower, so I took it on my own and it was two hot days, we worked, uh, Donnie and I fixed it.
What is this mileage mean?
Mileage right there, okay, my deal is, is three hundred plus two hundred expense.
And you get five hundred a month every month, whether you go anywhere in my life.
Yeah, but the two hundred, I took it off the mileage and then I only charged you for what I had besides that. Uh, one month was a lot, we did a lot of traveling. But the rest of it was one nineteen and one thirty-four, that was the mileage above the two hundred dollar expense.
Where did you go?
Oh, when I was here every day, whenever, down to bird, down to a place, everywhere.
Did you not use the city truck at times?
No, I did not that time, it went on.
What about that, that, uh, that HSA, seven hundred dollars?
That is a check that was written on October the ninth to Ms. Hannah Henson to re-up her healthcare savings account. That account, um, she was supposed to made a deductible of two hundred fifty dollars. And according to what I got from Blue Cross Blue Shield, she had made a two hundred and eleven dollars, a thirty cents and some of those bills weren't paid, it was just she was bringing the bills in, not where she had paid it. We were physically supposed to pay the bills. So she informed Mr. Don that she was leaving on October the sixth, she wrote that check on October the nineteenth and deposited seven hundred dollars in her personal HSA.
Y'all got an HSA?
Yes, we did. Each person, we have a deductible. And when we meet our deductible, we have an HSA account and as we-
Is it HSA or HRA?
It's an HSA, isn't it, Ms. Brenda? I believe it is. I've got, um, an email somewhere, I can check into it further, but the way that it states, we have a four thousand dollar deductible and that's part of our salary. We meet the first two fifty, we pay for that. Once we bring receipts showing that two fifty is paid, we are opened up a checking account and a hundred dollars is deposited in there from the city. The city pays the rest of our deductible. That's one of our benefits. So I have to pay the first two fifty and then I call, or I would have called the recorder at the time and said, "I'm going to the doctor, I'm gonna need, Jackie's done it, five hundred dollars for meds and my copay or whatever" because if you don't meet your deductible, normally you have to pay upfront. We put the money in there, they bring the receipt back for that before any other money should be deposited in the account. But you can't open the account and you can't put the money in the account until you've met that two fifty. And that's the issue here is that the two fifty wasn't met before the account was opened up. And this was all done after she, when the mayor that she was leaving.
But why, I mean, I'm just asking a question. Why was she granted that since she was no longer an employee?
That check was signed by her and the mayor. She wasn't granted anything, they did it. She did it, he signed the check. I don't know what she told him when she had the check signed, but she wrote the check. She signed the check, which is an issue in itself, but that's for another day. But that is not appropriate. You don't sign a check written to yourself or to an account for you. Um, the check was not signed by any other alderman or anyone. I was not on the account, I'm still not on the checking account. Um, I'm operating with help from outside people, like Pam's still on there, which, we're getting all that changed, but Ms. Brenda, Ms. Pam, Mr. Dennis, those are the only people on the account that are active within the city at this time.
I, I don't understand why, if she quit.
She could inform.
She gave her notice.
She had not informed us, she informed the mayor October sixth. We got, the board got letters on October the twenty-fifth, twenty-seventh, somewhere the last-
And when did she, when did she make that check out?
That check was written on the nineteenth, but she missed most of October.
But what was her last eight years? Was she still employ-
October the thirtieth.
October the thirtieth. But she missed most of October, especially where she was taken off work.
But she was still-
It wasn't in the office, she came in on the-
But she was still in-
Yes, she was still employed, but she did not provide receipts.
It's legal, yeah.
Her deductible hadn't been met, that's what makes it unclear.
Okay, how much was she missed, uh, missed her, uh, by her deductible?
About ninety dollars, eighty, nine dollars, something like that.
Yes. We have to bring two hundred fifty dollars of paid receipts to even be eligible to open the account, to get the money put in there. And it was not, the deductible was not met with the receipts through NC Hall.
By how much?
Um, I've got a hundred and thirty-one dollar, a hundred and eighty.
Looks like about the one.
About fifty dollars, but that still has to be done before you get that account. The account should have never been opened because she had not met her deductible.
That's right.
Okay. The financial report, uh, the, the original issue?
What is that?
What?
That, what is that, November class?
Um, November's CMFO class was paid for on October the seventeenth and it was attended and the city paid for it and she also took an unapproved HR class that the city paid for, for three hundred dollars in November, after she quit.
I make a motion, we do not approve this, uh, unapproved expense, uh, report.
Okay, can we approve the IRS where I had to pay the back payroll taxes that weren't done for the first two quarters and the boyettes for the-
Talking about, uh-
You haven't already paid them?
They are-
They, they need to be paid, we don't let that-
I've actually got the check, the IRS was paid on run this week because I called them and they said we had already accrued more interest.
Yeah.
So I went ahead and paid those three quarters. The boyettes check is actually, I've got it in a folder over here for one of y'all to sign before y'all leave.
That's just current and run, that's just what we had this week.
I just didn't, I didn't write the check until, I didn't get the receipt back to you yesterday after the dinner, so I had to wait and get that.
We don't need, need any more interest on that IRS.
No, it's paid, it's paid.
So you need to prove, pay the IRS, is that what you're asking?
Right, true, and then the boyettes is part.
We're not gonna prove my mileage, is that right?
I make a motion, we approve.
Those two items?
Those two items.
You're not gonna prove my mileage, so?
There's more than just your mileage, there are, uh, there's all this other stuff that's on there too.
Whatever.
This, uh, this seven hundred dollars, uh, there's, uh, a hundred and ten dollars, three hundred dollars.
That, that class was there for her, you- Yeah.
Not really November.
Not November. She, she went ahead and wrote her a check to pay for, you know, November.
This is in September tenth, it's September sixteenth.
But it's a November class.
Well, it was, it was already paid for.
But you're saying-
I heard take that class, 'cause she had-
She, she went ahead and paid for it, Don, but we didn't approve her to do that, 'cause she was done, left the city in, in November.
She gave her notice in November.
She gave her notice, she gave her notice in October and she took off the last several days burning sick time.
Okay.
And she, she went ahead and had, she went ahead and paid for her class, it's gonna take place in November, she wasn't even gonna be an employee in November, okay?
No.
So we're not, uh-
Not at all.
I make a motion, we do not approve these unapproved bills.
For Tammy?
Just for Tammy?
For all of it.
For all of it?
So, on, on the second sheet, only the IRS and the boyettes will be approved?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
I'll second it, thank you. Mr. Dennis?
Yes.
Ms. Nancy?
Yes.
Reddick?
Rosa?
Ms. Franky?
Yes.
Well, she passed.
Like it passed, so you're not gonna pay any bills, now, what are you gonna do?
So they can down, and I always put straight it out, uh, you know, they, they spent money to pay that.
That bill is the jet right there, that more bill is the jet, there's no reason why you shouldn't pay it. Now, this down here might have been a mistake on hers, part of hers, but this up here is, I had to have, I used my truck and I took the two hundred dollars off and that one, that five thirty-three was from more than just one month. And in this month, I didn't charge you nothing. You owe me eighty or ninety bucks right now to, to pay that.
On the expense account, on the expense report that I've got for the five thirty-three, it was only two hundred dollars taken off of that. Like, if it would have been for multiple months, then you would have taken off the two hundred you received for each of those months.
Okay, alright.
And it was only two hundred dollars, it was seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and two hundred of it was taken off.
Okay, alright.
Now, but these bills have already been paid, right? We just have to approve them.
These are things we found trying to balance October. We found all these checks that had been written that we were trying to unclear what they were. I've been on the phone with Intas about the school and things like that, trying to figure out if she, if she paid for the, 'cause if she, I was told that we were, that Mr. Moore was initially informed on October the sixth that she was not gonna be here any longer and then she started taking off the runoff. So if she came in and just paid for these classes after she turned her notice in and took them in November, that's the issue and, and that's what they're saying. Yes, she attended the classes. And according to what they're, they told me today, she is planning on finishing the classes on her own experience. We just paid for November and we shouldn't have. And that's one hundred and ten dollars. And I mean, we're, we've, we've worked very tirelessly to get these things, these checking accounts balanced and when you come up with something that off the track or doesn't look right, you have to stop and question it. And that's where we kinda got into all of this.
Forty years, they was money just paid out, checks being written, over two days.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
For, for employees, when they're hired, what is the probation period?
Ninety days.
So they're not supposed to get-
You told me yourself that, uh, that I was, I could get my mileage, took my time, had to see, you told me that.
Told you that, why did you do that?
You said, you, you, yeah, you said, I used my truck, you said, I need to stay.
Well, that's, that's what that two hundred dollars a month thing was about.
No, but, but look here, I went over that on mileage. I mean, I, I took that off.
I, I think the issue, from what we, from the auditors on that is, is it's showing over two thousand miles for that period. So there's no, normally, I, I, I'm not, I'm just stating fact. Normally, time I've ever got mileage, you write down where you left, where you went, how many miles you got, you added up, you times, it times sixty-five and that's how you get paid. What I was told is part of that, that two hundred dollars is, it is explicitly just supposed to be known that that's what you get for mileage and if you go over that, there's no money in the budget to cover the overage on that mileage. So unless you bring it before the board, it's not supposed to be paid because it's not been approved in the budget. It has to be approved beforehand.
Now, I'm gonna tell them that, my, my, what I'm going through, I gotta have, I gotta ride and I purse my whole stuff and, uh, there ain't, uh, there ain't no money there, very little money there, was, I drove all over the country and now you're trying to tell us you don't wanna pay me for it.
I'm just saying, we have to follow the charter and if the charter states that that's not approved or-
You're doing a lot of stuff on the charter that's not approved, so.
That's-
I don't work out for, I know.
Back to my question.
Go ahead, sorry.
So they have a ninety day probation period.
That's right.
They do not take any benefits from that probation period.
I've, I've been told two different things. I've not had anybody be here long enough for it to become an issue yet for me and I'm, I basically, I haven't even, I'm not even hired yet. I'm filling in, just trying to keep everything running.
But my question is, is for-
I've been told sixty days on insurance and ninety days on vacation and you, you can accrue sick time the first two months you're here. You don't, you cannot take sick time until you're here for ninety days. And holiday pay is at ninety days. And, and that, to me, it's pretty much uniform with anything I've, anywhere I've ever worked. You don't get holiday pay till ninety days, you don't get sick time till ninety days.
Yeah, but it's not accrued.
Well, for us, in our charter, it states that we accrue it, yes, we accrue it at eight hours a month, but you are not eligible to take it until you're ninety at that age. And she, I mean, she was eligible for sick time, she had been here for, she started in February, so she was eligible for the sick time that she took. But she quit working and took all her sick time, came back and worked one day and then left, and that's what they were explaining. Ready to do our business?
Yeah, we got the old business insurance for November.
Y'all were giving Blue Cross Blue Shield proposals last month and Ms. Denise Crates is here tonight. She, she asked if she could prepare something, um, she was wanting to show y'all that before y'all loaded.
Actually, um, I don't have a proposal because I looked and searched through United Healthcare and Aetna versus the plan that you guys have now, okay? Blue Cross and Blue Shield has the best HRA plan slash HSA, whichever way is coded for you guys. So they have, I, I compared it to United Healthcare. The premium that was comparable to Blue Cross and Blue Shield of what you guys have now, uh, with, with United Healthcare, the deductible would have been six thousand dollars versus the four, which would be more exposure to the county, or city, should I say, than the county. So I did search and I couldn't find anything better, so. But I do want you to know, just because you guys started out with, you know, the employee paying the first two fifty, you guys can change that. I mean, this plan that they have, and I hope they appreciate what the city provides for them because you're not gonna see it, you're not gonna see a two hundred and fifty dollar deductible. Because basically, even though it's four thousand, they only paid two fifty and the city, and, and, you, you guys need to keep up with that because see how much extra the city is paying over the premiums, it's, 'cause that is on top of the premiums.
Yeah. That's why I always ask what we were out of pocket.
Yeah.
And so far, we've been very fortunate with not having that much out of pocket.
But that can change it.
Exactly.
You know, but, but, yeah, I mean, the plan is a good plan, especially with what you guys do give the employees. And, I mean, they should be blessed, they should be thankful because there's not anything like that out there.
No, and that's, that's one of the things that, you know, State Jones was very advocate about because of the fact that we had good insurance and that that was an actual big benefit for our employees coming to work.
It's huge.
Of course, we got several employees that realize that, that, you know-
Well, they need to because-
When you turn around and you put in the dollar amount, we thought he got a spreadsheet here three months ago that showed the actual, what the actual cost per employee was.
Yeah.
As far as their base pay and then bringing benefits and then the insurance.
And by the way, they don't pay social security on that, those premiums, they, and, you know, when you've got a two hundred and fifty dollar deductible, okay, that you pay, the city pays up to the four thousand, then you pay a hundred percent of the premium.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
You know, what it does, it makes a difference when you got somebody, and I'm just using a hypothetical number. When they're turning around, they're looking at, at roughly fifty thousand and we're talking about their salary.
Right.
Grove's salary, not Brown, but fifty thousand. But yet, when it comes down to the bottom line, what we're looking at, we're paying them seventy thousand 'cause they're getting twenty thousand dollars for the benefits.
Exactly.
All they're looking at is seventy.
But let them have something catastrophic with a different kind of plan, oh my Jesus, they would be, you know, understand why it's important. But, but you guys have a great plan. I don't think that you can find anything better out there because the number of carriers that we have to shop with on a group basis now is very few, very, very few. And I couldn't get a quote from Blue Cross and Blue Shield because they were already dated and recorded on it. Because there's other plans out there with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. You know, you may consider a, a, you know, having an office visit copay versus the two fifty, da-da-da-da. I mean, the plan that they probably saw.
It's spectacular.
Oh, it's, it's more than that, it's more than that. So I do thank y'all for giving me the chance to quote.
Thank you for taking your time with it, I'm sorry.
Hey, look here, I, I want to, I wanna say something. I do thank the board for our insurance, I really do. It means a lot to me. Of course, a couple more years now, I'll be on-
Mid-come?
Un-come, I mean, yeah, but I'm gonna have the-
You're gonna be shocked.
I'm gonna be, but the thing about it is, I do appreciate what they've done.
I did say, absolutely, it's wonderful and I, my past job didn't offer- And I, my past job getting offer insurance, and when I was informed about the insurance here, it was mind blowing because I never, and it is, I mean, I, I see, I saw a lot of chatter on Facebook about people talking about what the city employees make. But when you take into that bene- that benefit into consideration, that's a huge difference, and it's wonderful.
Medicare is not free.
No, Medicare is not free, and then you have to have a supplement, or you still pay.
That's right, and a part of your drug plan if you don't get an advantage plan.
Why be premium is one seventy-five a month.
Why can't you go out and take around longer?
Sure, I already know this one.
Before, before we move on, I'll back up on Don's situation there with mileage. I don't have any problem with Don's mileage being paid. I do have a problem with the money that was, the checks that was written and by this lady that, that paid stuff in advance for her to go ahead and go to school if she was not an employee. Uh, and it's not, this is not all of it, she, she wrote other checks.
Uh, there, there is an issue with some comp time where you all stated you wanted me to be in charge of time. And according to my records, she had ninety-four, I believe Mr. Fred's got all the paperwork over there. Ninety-four comp hours, and she paid herself. In addition to the forty hours of vacation time, you absolutely told her she was not entitled to because she's not been here for a year. She paid those forty hours. And then she paid multiple comp hours, that's about seventeen hundred dollars.
I don't, uh, I mean, I, that's why I say, that's why I want to go back to this. I don't have any problem with Don, Don, I know Don runs his truck, I know Don does a lot of running. I don't have any problem with his, uh, mileage being paid. I do have a problem with all this other money that was written out that wasn't approved by the board, and the board really didn't know anything about.
Do we need to amend your motion, ma'am, to say that she'll pay for Don's?
I don't have any problem with Don getting his mileage. He, he runs his truck, I know, I know man stays.
You ought to rein him in.
I got no problem with that.
Shouldn't it be addressed to Tammy, a, a letter or something that she owes the city that?
It needs to be looked into, uh, the city needs to pay back the money that went out. It's the taxpayer's money, and we're over this, we're supposed to be guarding our taxpayer's money now.
With the hours that was overpaid, the comp time, the health savings account, and all of it combined, it's very close to three thousand dollars, if it's not a little over. That was paid out, that was not, well, on the open up, to say the least.
Let me amend Don, uh, W C's motion to say that we will pay Don's mileage and the IRS envoyettes. We will approve those bills, but not the bills that Tammy wrote.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, uh, Ms. Brenda?
Yes.
W C?
Yes.
Mr. Dennis? Mr. Renee?
Yes.
Guys, are there not any check and balances?
That's what we're trying-
It's, uh, it's been a disaster down here for months.
It's been a disaster.
Over months.
It's been a disaster, it's been a disaster for quite some time. And I'm not popular at the moment, but I'm doing everything I can to get records right. I want to do what's right. I've been in this line of work for a very, very long time. And I have a very good track record with former employers that will tell you that I'm honest and I'm trustworthy, and if I'm gonna do it, it's gonna be right. And I'm not gonna do anything that's not right. And this is just things that have come up. I'm not out to get anybody, I'm, I'm strictly saying, when you go in and try to balance a month, and you're seeing check after check after check, that doesn't look right, and then you dig into it a little bit further, I have to bring it forward, I have an obligation to do that. And mind you, I still, I'm filling in, like, this has been a, a nightmare, and, and just, I had very little training. Pain has been invaluable, but we're gonna get there.
We need to move forward.
Yes.
Okay, uh, back to our insurance lawyer, uh.
Okay, you were gonna stay with what we got?
Sorry.
We're gonna just stay with the insurance?
Well, I, I, that's why, I look, well, they got your choices, so they have to approve, but I might move to approve it later.
I have a choice.
See this proposal?
Second.
W C was motion to approve?
Yes, uh, the, uh, the insurance proposal.
Right, second, okay, the premium?
Yes.
Mr. Dennis?
Yes.
Ms. Nancy?
Yes.
Ms. Renee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, it is very much appreciated.
Yes, thank, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
We got the ethics resolution.
I've got a couple new employees I'll talk to, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Mr. Dennis?
Yes.
Ms. Renee?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
He's a donor, remember?
But I don't think we ever, that's the one, that's gotta, that's gotta be seen at the end.
That's the second reading, though, right? And that's the second, both of them, yeah, yes.
Yeah, so that's, that's the one we had, the second reading, all they did. That's gotta be turned, I have to change where it wants.
Yeah.
So that'd be usually the fault. Well, we've got a, 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 yeah.
I don't know. The only, the only one? Never.
You go, you go mediate.
I don't know.
I'd be frank enough.
I mean, I know she hasn't showed up or anything, but I don't know what I'd have said with this.
So here's, here's the status with the Norris Brothers lawsuit against the town. Uh, the counteroffer was proposed to Norris Brothers attorney, and it was rejected. So the next step would be to go to mediation. And it'll probably be two or three months, depending on when the mediator and all the parties are about to get together to mediate. The cause will be dependent upon what you need, mediator is selected charges. It wouldn't be from fifteen hundred, four thousand. It would be, it would be either between the two attorneys on each, each side, at court to court. The parties can't reach an agreement on who to use, the court appointed. There needs, the board needs to select one or two board members to participate in a mediation and to give them approval to enter to get a settlement there if it's reached in, if it is reached in mediation.
Well, I don't really feel like to say, oh, but, uh, you know, they didn't, they definitely what needs to be done, they can get approval. So they would, you know, we put down a rock, they would supposed to put a-
I think we did need to select-
No record, not all they did, but. I did reach out to Northwest Development District, uh, to get their records, and they told me they had no records. They turned everything over to the town. Kind of box.
Is that, is it, um, Laura Tazin?
Maybe in that back file room where all the records are from the past years. But there's like fifteen years of records in there that really needs to be gone through when some of them destroyed because they're past the limit, and we have to keep them. But it may be, I would just have to get back there and dig and see if I can find it.
And it could be sitting anywhere when we had that water leak back.
Yes, and then they're gonna tell it, if anybody got thrown out when they have the water leak.
So we just need, you need, somebody needs to be a coordinator at the board to do mediation?
I'm to, entering, I mean, kind of really just to settle or resolve if and once reached in mediation. Or like it won't be.
Two people, two people from the board?
One or two, it doesn't matter.
Probably should have two people in there to have their agreement.
What y'all gotta do is come up with a, a number that you're gonna settle, you know?
They didn't, they wouldn't take it.
What, what, what you, I mean, you got to have, when you go to mediation, it's gonna be a negotiation deal. So this board, whoever goes, has got to be able to say, we can do this. This is what we can do, and we don't have any more authority. So you, you got to-
Yeah, we have to do that before we go.
You got to have a number that's been voted on, or that everybody's agreed on, or you ain't, you're wasting your time. I think we'd already done that. We settled, we, we come up with and offered twenty-five thousand. I'm just saying, whoever goes over there to mediation, they get down there and they get closed.
Yeah.
You know, you won't be able to give to, you know, if you're gonna give this, two, two more thousand, or another thousand, or whatever. If you ain't, can't, can't negotiate a little bit, you ain't got no way to- Fred's hitting the nail on it, but just as an update on what it boiled down to, things two years old. And what they, they, their original bid with the C D B G grant was put real rock around half of a levy. They ended up doing the whole thing.
Without a permit.
And they went over, and they-
Well, my understanding is, I, you know, I've talked to those guys a lot that come get stuff. Was it not so bad that they had to go around? And I understand what they told me, that it was, that it was about to break or something, and they had to go around.
That was on the Northwest, and that's what, uh, that's what was supposed to be fixed.
I just know that they said-
The big thing is that there was three, there was three issues. Two times they followed protocol, they went in and they got a change order, and they got whatever I dropped there to pay. But then they come, and, and they were paying for that. The issue, they didn't follow protocol, and then-
I think if they'd have just come and said that was the problem, that they needed to redo it, then they'd have voted on it and passed it. But they didn't get any agreement.
You got, you know, when you go into a negotiation, you got to have a little view of that, yeah. Are you wasting time, go just like me, send it?
Can I ask a question? Fred was talking about the fees on the mediation, you know? Just say, for instance, like it's twenty-five hundred, is that for each party? It's usually sure fifty, fifty. Well, you gotta take that into consideration too, you know, for your expense go. So you gotta factor that in, so gotta come up with a number that, like Tony said, the, all black. Give them a little, little room, but you gotta factor in that mediation fee too.
See, they're all, they're all ninety-five thousand.
The original bill, I was doing sixty-eight thousand, but now they're doing ninety-nine thousand.
You got the rock. Yeah, but it went from, from forty and let it go.
But they were right, they said they would take less than the ninety-five now.
And now they went out and go. No, no, they, they said they'd take sixty.
Not sixty.
They offered twenty, we offered twenty-five.
I, I, I think I agree with Terry, I say offer forty.
Offer forty, so that's walking off, and we got the rock.
What you gotta do is go through the negotiations by this.
Yeah.
Now, what, what, what?
I know, but what are we, what's our limit? That's what we gotta find out.
Now, Mr. Tony brought up a, a, a good, uh, some good information. There is a defense called necessity. And when they're going through the, uh, phase of doing this work, if they determine that there, there's something that needs to be fixed out of necessity, you know, that's a recognized defense in court law. And, uh, that negate, that would negate, if that's recognized, it would negate to going through the proper procedure of change, change, to change. But they could have done it after the fact, and they still didn't do that.
But if we decide tonight to go to mediation, it's still gonna be two or three months before we can actually get into mediation.
Well, we got the holidays, yeah.
And so even if we have time then, in between time, to discuss what we want to do, and how much we want to do, and approve what, whoever's gonna go, what they have, their negotiating balance is. Because right now, I think the main thing we need to do is, are we going to pay them something? Or are we gonna go to mediation? That's what we need to decide tonight, so we can get that ball rolling, and then you can start on the other ball.
You can, no, court's gonna require you to go to mediation.
Yeah.
And in the meantime, it, it doesn't stop the parties from trying to negotiate something before or after mediation.
Yeah.
You know, up to, up to-
Up to the mediation time.
Up to trial, you know, so, and even at trial, come to the-
You can come to an agreement if they have a trial, yeah.
So.
But that's what we have to decide tonight, is are we going to go to mediation, or are we gonna offer them something? That's what we have to decide tonight.
I just need the board to identify which member's gonna be in mediation because normally there's paperwork that has to be filled out to submit to the mediator confidentiality forms. They have to have the, the party's information, so that's what I would need. As far as the cost, it, it just all depends on mediation.
Yeah.
I don't expect it to be under four, four, five thousand. But, I mean, mediation could go for days, or it could be more than that.
Mediation, I'm gonna make the law your bridge.
There you go, that's right.
It's not making this a bridge.
I'm in favor, I'm in favor of making another proposal to myself. Well, offering twenty-five, I would, I would be, uh, I would say, make another offer of thirty-seven-five to start with.
In mediation, I mean, I understand it right now, but that's what we're at, we're going to mediation.
I, I will say that, that the board needs to consider, uh, T L M's exposure in the matter. Their exposure is up to what the town paid T L M for liability purposes.
I got a question, Fred. On, on them guys, they haul that stuff down here on them dump trucks, correct?
I was there, I don't know how.
Fred or Frank?
Yeah.
Come in on dump trucks? Now, when they load, do they get a ticket for each load?
We discussed that.
What about Norris Brothers? If they, you know-
We've got the tickets, we've got the balance of what came from the quarry. But as far as the tickets being turned in, what T L M's telling us, the engineer that was on site collected those tickets.
Yeah.
Has left and gone with another company now, he's up around New Hampshire, somewhere up there.
Oh, and, and-
He, he, we, we had a meeting with him last week.
All right.
And Randy McKenna, the owner of T L, he came down, he went with us, uh, with Fred.
And there's a, just a fact finding session to try to figure out where we needed to go. All right.
His, his, his opinion is we don't owe it. And that was what he told Steve, and this issue started two years ago.
Yes.
And the board, and we both know, not to pay it based on V L M's, but those they didn't follow protocol.
Uh, yeah, I understand that part, but-
It's just drug out, it's drug out since then.
And they still say that.
Well, well, the Norris-
They don't have no signed tickets.
The company-
They don't have no signed tickets, don't pay them nothing.
That's right, the company ought to have the tickets.
All they got, all they got's what's at the quarry that they picked up.
They could win anywhere.
Yeah. They ain't got the tickets, oh, damn.
They wrote originally Tennessee, they, they wrote to Norris Brothers. They, that's, I don't know, they got, that's, you know, well, that's well, keep a record, who he blew for. Comes as, well, you owe me, well, okay, I owe you, that's, that's good.
I also need to, the board, I received a couple emails from Randy, uh, from, that were sent to Travis, the engineer working the project in town, and attached to that was a change order number three, balancing out. Uh, which reduced the amount of gravel down to eight hundred sometimes.
Right.
But the total, the total amount of the contract, uh, to be made was still five hundred and, I can't remember the amount. But it had a total amount, but it's unsigned, there's no signatures on the change order, like the proper signature requires. So I'm sure, I asked Randy to look further, and his records said they had a copy of that most probably. I don't want to, to decide it with this one.
Well, if there ain't no paperwork, you don't know, man.
That's right.
Yeah, that's what the mayor said, and I agree with you one hundred percent of them, man.
Well, we're looking at right now, is you wanting somebody to go to mediation, somebody out with the boat.
So we need to name two people.
Uh, and like, well, like, for example, we don't know how long that'll be, and we don't know how many days that'll be. So if one works, then that'd be hard for them to do, right?
They have to decide on the date, and then whoever's gonna be representing will have to make sure they're available that day. But of course, they, they have, they go from one into the other to see, are you available that day?
Can an offer be made before mediation?
Yeah.
But, you know, I think they're so far apart, I think they're gonna laugh and off anyway, but still, I think-
That's what we just did, we just offered, you might have to sweep the park.
The, the company when you pick up-
Yeah, I, I think we, we mentioned, oh, the, the, like mediation, yeah.
I personally feel that if we go to mediation, the two people that should represent the city is the mayor and the vice mayor. Right now, that's my personal opinion. That they should be listed to represent it, and, I mean, I, if he wants, if, I feel if we don't have paperwork, we shouldn't pay it at all. But if we want to get rid of it, offer them thirty-seven-five, and if they don't want to take it, then it's an automatic go to mediation, that's it. And list it, Don and, and, uh, W C are the ones that represent the city.
Nancy, hey, what about the company? They ought to have some sort of, uh, paper up there, not, not the guy with the truck that- Nancy, hey, what about the company? They ought to have some sort of, uh, paper up there, not, not the guy with the truck that comes down here and hands it.
We've got, we've got that.
We've got that. He's got records of that, I think.
All right.
Yeah, he's got a print.
Don't take a friend on, they offer.
I, you want my advice? I normally don't, I, my advice is pretty much limited to the board and me, I don't normally do it public. But if you want me to tell you in public, I'll tell you. You want me to tell you in public?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would not make an offer.
Okay.
I'd go to mediation.
Okay.
That's all, let's, let's, let's move on.
Well, then I'm here, I know that we go to mediation and say Don and WC as our representatives.
Give, uh, give the board dollars and certain areas.
I'll second that.
I'm gonna second.
I think they have to, I think that's happening, you're saying to do it, but I think they would have to agree. Do you wanna go with it?
We're available to do this.
Uh, yeah, I know, it don't matter. I'm, I'm okay with it.
I am, it's all right, we, we're, we don't have a job, so. We can, we can do it.
WC?
Yes.
Ms. Brandon?
Yes.
Mr. Dennis?
Yes.
Ms. Frankie?
Yes.
Okay. Woo! Oh!
That's fun.
We got, we got a long way to go.
We're still on other business.
So you identify the board members, what about authority to enter to the group?
Okay.
We don't need to go over thirty-seven-five.
I agree, I agree with you.
You don't, you don't, you don't have to decide that.
We got, I got time to decide.
See, I don't decide whether or not to make the offer, but I, I do think you give the, the two board members that.
I agree.
Are gonna participate in mediation, the authority to bind the town to a settlement.
I make a motion that we do not exceed thirty-seven-five in an offer.
Hold on.
No.
She made a recommendation that legal fees are laying at thirty-seven-five and, and you gotta pay these two guys sitting down there.
Let me, let me clarify that.
Yeah.
When I, I mean, give them the authority, I don't mean it's a certain amount. Of course, it won't be more than what they were offering.
That's it, that's the record.
You're not gonna offer eighty thousand, they offer seven or six thousand.
Yeah, right, right.
But they do need, they need, need the discretion or authority to enter into the settlement. Whatever's in the best interest of town. That's your motion. Is that bold, Mark?
Yeah. Because you're gonna have a lot of legal fees and a lot of time, and I'm glad it's gonna take two days.
Do I just say it like that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I make a motion that WC and the mayor has the authority to negotiate within reason. According to the fees that will be added to the.
The settlement plus fees, okay.
Taking that into consideration.
Do I have a second?
I just want, I just want to make it, that's why I'm.
I wrote it down and I'm not sure I can repeat it. Okay, so Mr. Frankie, second, WC?
Yes.
Ms. Brandon? Yes. Mr. Dennis?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Okay. Move on.
Okay.
All right. We'll just open records.
That's its other.
We went, we went over that.
Okay, we didn't went over that.
We've gone over it, but we haven't, hadn't had a reading on it yet.
This is the first reading.
This will be the first reading.
I make a motion on the first reading.
Second.
Mr. Dennis?
Yes.
Ms. Nancy, do, can I?
Yes.
Frankie?
Yes, and let me add this, based on the recommendation from, uh, legal counsel for Mr. Fred. If you'll notice at the top of that, and that's what we're trying to, in, in doing this work on trying to get everything organized. Fred chose the idea as far as the ordinance, um, with the, the date. Or the day's date. If this were the second reading, we would go in there, one, two, what is today?
Fourteen.
One, two, one, four, two, three would be the ordinance number. If we were reading two ordinances, we'd have A and B. Am I right, Fred, that we need to find that?
That would work and, and it needs to be consistent from here on into the future.
More, more of all, that way, when we start trying to put these books that the committee's doing, when we start trying to put those resolutions together, it'd be a lot easier to be able to locate something and index.
But we won't be able to do that order.
We won't be able to do it on this one till we have a second reading in January.
So the code of ethics, the, the resolution would be today's date?
The, the one we just passed on ethics would be today's date. And that'd be the resolution number on it.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
You might as well put a year on that then.
That'd be.
If it went to one, four, two, three, it would be the latest number.
We might, it's gonna be probably twenty, twenty-three.
Twenty, twenty-three, yeah. I thought I said nineteen, twenty-three.
All right. One, two, two, four, two, oh, two, three.
We have a vacancy on the committee? A vacancy on the committee?
The ethics.
We don't know. She has not reported, but she's missed the last two meetings and I don't know whether she's gonna continue on or not. Gonna find out and then, 'cause we, we haven't tried to meet this month because of Christmas and everything going on, but we, we do need to try to get a date set for, uh, January. So I, you know, that, that, since we're talking about that, that, uh, maybe the second Thursday, just the second Thursday, the board meeting, either, what, third Thursday, was that?
I, I would rather, but because of my work, I would rather it, to stay, not have more than one meeting a week.
A week?
I mean, what I'm saying is, if we're, if the, like, we had, had that meeting. I don't want two meetings, meetings a week, 'cause I work at night. So, to do spread them out, maybe a week.
Okay, we said third, ours is always the second Thursday, so this could be the third Thursday.
Third Thursday.
If that's all right with everybody.
Eighteen.
You got the date on it.
Eighteen.
Third Thursday, the next.
Eighteenth.
And, and. January eighteenth, at, what time?
At six o'clock, yes, uh, you see it.
Okay. And I think we need to send a letter out on the other to make sure that she knows when. I emailed last time. I think the last meeting, but I wasn't, and last minute, I used to send her a letter. Okay, I will do that.
All right, we got the new business, finish our recorder, city clerk position.
Retrospect, we all know what we got, we, we're in a, in a slant again, and we've, uh, best stepped up and has been trying to fill the duties of reporter. We've got a new girl in now that's fitting in as far as, uh, the water clerk position. I don't suggest there, I'm waiting till next month to, to hire them now.
Mine's temporarily hired right now.
Right.
Being the virgin.
As far as the full-time position.
My only concern on that is we're fixing to have to do the bank account and if we go ahead and hire her, we can do her at the same time. And she's doing a really, really good job.
That'd be a discretion of what we're doing now, or we're gonna do something.
I think we need to go ahead and, and hire, make her temporary position permanent.
Is it on the, the debt?
Yes. Okay, so Brenda first. Mr. Dennis second, WC?
What, uh, what are we on, both of y'all or just her?
Just her.
Yes.
Now, we're, we're saying, we're, which.
We're saying, we gotta have her back.
We, we have to do you first.
Yeah.
Oh.
It'll do best for her.
Okay, whose motion is on that?
My motion is we hire that as our senior clerk.
Got a second from the sixth.
And her, uh, her pay will be retroactive back to when she, when, whenever she had to take over.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know exactly what date that was back.
October thirtieth.
That's my, that's my.
Ms. Brenda?
To hire her and, or by retroactive.
Mr. Dennis?
Yes.
Mr. Knight?
Yes.
Ms. Frankie?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
I'll create a vacancy on the waterfront. Make a motion to go ahead and hire.
Second.
With a, with a ninety-nine pro.
Jessica, Jessica, Ms. Brenda?
Yes.
Mr. Dennis?
Yes.
Ms. Nancy?
Yes.
Mr. Knight?
Yes.
Who is it, Jessica?
Her name is Jessica Butler, she was the general manager at ECM for several years and was laid off when they changed hands.
Okay, yeah, I know Jessica, what you said.
Very, very, very smart and done a really, really good job.
She's really doing a good job catching on, but.
Yes.
How long was she at ECM?
I'm not sure.
There was a girl at ECM that was fired.
It's not her, I, 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 we, I was told that, we ran a background check.
Run, run.
We, she's already bonded.
I want everything.
Yes, there is, she has no charges at all ever in her life or anything.
No, she's clear.
Yes.
I've already.
I was, yeah, I was informed of that, so we went ahead and did the background check and all that just to make sure and went ahead and got her bonded immediately.
You know, while.
Oh, you say I on there? Pete, no, I say see.
Yeah, while we're, while we're speaking on two ladies, you've got, our, we got, we got two ladies, they're, they're, they're trying to learn the work, they're trying to do a good job. And, and we will not tolerate them being harassed down here by anybody. Did you talk to, you take that situation to date, Terry?
I did, it's done, it's no problem.
Okay.
It's all done. As a matter of fact, he, he was real nice about it, everything stood.
Okay.
And I have it on camera, so everything's good. No problem.
Not tolerated. Okay, what about the, what about the bank account?
I could just, we need a, we'll need a letter, uh, as a resolution for the board, as we have done in the past. If you, just, or vote on it that we're gonna add both of them to the bank account and also keep the mayor, Brenda and Dennis or whoever else is, who needs specified, well, 'cause they'll have to get. Then it, their names have to be listed on that, it has to be carried to the bank and, and get a new card.
And we need to take the ones off of there that are no longer here.
All right.
That's only be forty K on it.
Let the motion to prove a resolution to the bank.
Second.
We need to do this right away.
Yeah, it needs to be done along.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Brenda?
Yes.
Mr. Dennis?
Yes.
Ms. Knight?
Yes.
Frankie?
Yes.
Our credit card machine?
I just do a follow-up with what we just on that, I mean, they haven't been able to do anything on the credit card that we brought in two months ago, that, uh. But those, uh, wouldn't anybody own these accounts? What we have, what they're telling us right now, a, a second machine through ca- uh, cadence, we're looking at thirty dollars a month. And plus a two point six oh, uh, percent, uh, surcharge and ten cents per transaction for running across the wifi. That's.
How much does it cost us for that credit, credit machine?
That's simple, add in one, what my suggestion was, is buy our own.
They're gonna write in one for how much, Frank?
Thirty dollars a month, two point six oh and ten cents a transaction, what you're gonna do is eliminate that thirty dollars a month. You deal a lot of it with that, don't you, uh, Bruce? Yeah, I know the one I've got now, uh, they, they come down so far now, they ain't funny, the first one I bought, I gave like twelve hundred dollars, but this one I've got now, I didn't give but three, little three hundred dollars.
Say a lot of the banks, financial institutions, uh, they want to offer those just because of those.
Yeah, that thirty dollars a month, 'cause they never know what fees or transaction fees and everything.
And, uh, and I don't know what machine is to buy it personally, but if you could avoid those, but yeah, before I would, I believe I would check expense since it's gonna be, uh, transactions, uh.
Now, is this on top of the one we already have? This is the second one.
It would be a general account.
This will be for property taxes and things that would, that pay into the general account.
But, you know, when you think about that, you know, when, when it, she just said about taxes and everything, you know, one of the things that are financially, you know, you can, uh, you can rest assured far as security goes.
But in our new software, that's included in it, it's included with the price of the new software.
I think she paid twenty-two hundred dollars. For that, for the credit card.
It's, it's in the package with the software, I think, instead.
It was, it's in the county, 'cause I took payments to the county for the software. And whoever paid their county taxes, they paid a dollar and they would go online and pay it. And then at the end of every month, then it's, it's all put in like a certain, like, like a, 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 an account. And then they dump it like in your account at the end of the month, it's like a web account, you dump it in the web account. Web account in month dumped into the city.
I think we turned a three dollar fee for each transaction, right?
As of now, yes, for the water, but we can only run water payments on that machine because it pays into the water account.
Talking about the, the new software that we had, that the board voted to pass? The credit card machine is in that, that, that will take care of all that, correct?
Correct.
And you don't have to buy another one?
Well, no, she had to pay for the credit card machine, but, I mean, you don't have to pay a monthly fee or anything. I, and, and I don't think it was very much, but she owned the machine after that.
Yeah.
But it was nurture.
You gotta have your machine.
Yeah, it was cheap.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, I bought mine.
It was just a little swipe, this is all it was.
This says the credit card reader, this is on a, the sales proposal was three hundred and thirty-one dollars for the credit card reader.
That's just a reader.
Right.
But you, you can get a machine for that.
That's if they come in and pay their office, they can pay online too, through that software, they can go online, like pay their taxes or their wa- I guess their water, but all, you can pay your taxes online too. And then they have a little swipe where if they want to come in the office, they can swipe it. That's what's on.
Software that has been put on both sides.
It's on the agenda to talk about it later on there while.
That'd be good.
I did know it, but I don't know.
It hasn't, it's, we, it's on the agenda to talk about doing that for now.
Yeah. Has anybody talked to the credit card, all you've got around the house, I put another machine in?
It's from cadence.
We couldn't talk to them, we didn't have anybody to talk to them, once we got, when we voted on this, everything's been in limbo.
Why do you gotta have two credit card machines? That's the big thing.
What they're telling us, Chang, is that the, uh, credit card we got right now is tied directly into the waterfront. And we asked about having it set up to where it would.
So the money, so you got a water fund checking account and you got a general fund?
Yeah.
Got six different.
Most of the people that, most of the people that use the credit card machine right now use it to pay the water bill and that goes into a water fund and.
Why can't you make it go all in the general fund and then set it up?
Controllers always won't let you, water, water you have to keep entirely separate. We can't use water for nothing but water, we can't even, you know, you have a sinkhole right out front here. And be sitting here like we are right now, one point six billion in contingency for water, you can't use it for nothing but water.
But if you do the new software, can you run everything through it and, and the software separates it?
Yes.
You can do that on local government right now, I, I mean, I'm assuming if y'all have local government.
We can flex, Chang.
Yeah, I mean, that's what the same, isn't that, Ms. Brenda, the same thing?
If you run the report, you would get, you would get how much was general and how much is water, but then you would have to transfer. The general amount out of water and put it into general.
But that's a political.
You can do that.
Right.
But now this, this credit card machine that they've got in here right now, they had it set up for me, it did water and general, you push one button for general, one button for water. But they, they cut it, they decided that it didn't pay for itself with general because they didn't have that many general transactions except at tax time, which is seasonal. So they, they just went to one, to the water only.
But the thing that they did, I, I, I think I'm right on the, on the county tax thing, was that, um, for now, I mean, I know I can come up here and pay my taxes a little every month.
But you could do the credit card, I mean, you could do it and make payments on it and not, um, not have to come up here, you know. To people that have parents.
They, they can call in their tax, even if they just wanna pay, make a partial payment, they can call it in. And she, I mean, they're, we wouldn't have general right now, but you can, if, if she had a, a credit card machine for general, they could make a partial payment. But you can, if, if she had a, the credit card machine for general, they could make a partial payment or books. You don't go online, they'll do. They have to just call it in, right? They don't, you can't make payments online on your taxes.
We're not taking any taxes over the phone right now because we don't have a credit card machine. And I was told the only thing that can be charged on that credit card machine that was in my former office was just the water bill payments. Water reconnects and things like that. You can't run any property taxes or cemetery payments or anything on that machine.
But at one time, they did have general.
Yeah, but they did, they did not pay for itself.
Hey, this software that y'all talking about, is this, is this the new, latest and greatest the city can run off of?
Yep.
So, and you're saying it's in the software?
Yep.
So, I mean, it's simple. You got your following software, no sense to get another credit card machine. Pay the new software if you got it and use that system.
Well, it's on the agenda to discuss that software because we've got five years to do that. And you've got a brand new girl working in the water office and, um.
But they may ask this question, is Agent Burt learning on the computer or learning on paper? They have to transfer it to computer.
Uh, we're not learning on paper. We're, we're, we have computer software that we use and it is going to be obsolete in five years.
So we're gonna continue doing something obsolete.
It'd be easier to train somebody new on new stuff, right? When everybody's learning it and everybody's on the same page.
Everybody learn together.
Yeah.
I mean, you're going back, I mean, you do whatever you want, but you're going backwards, you can continue doing what you're wanting to do. I mean, my thing is bring the new system in.
I'm not, I, I don't wanna go backwards. I wanna stand still for just a little bit and let me get her trained.
But you're still not progressing the city.
And then when we get to a point.
The trainer on something is fixing to be obsolete.
You're a trainer again.
But this new program is very, it's similar to it, but it's different. I mean, just the way.
They're gonna come in and train you. You're not gonna have to labor over this. They're gonna come in and help you. I mean, you're paying for them to come help you. They're not leaving you out here in the dark to figure it out.
But this software needs to be upgraded every, I mean, I do them five years in my office.
Right.
Cost fifteen thousand every time we do it. But it's the latest thing that's on the market. Same thing has happened to the city, not wait thirty years and decide you're gonna change it. I mean, it needs to stay upgraded. Things change daily with this computer stuff. But like Renee said, you're, you're paying for somebody to come teach you anyway, so I'd rather learn on the new stuff.
Since we jumped around, I didn't make it.
Credit card machine?
We're back at the.
Credit card machine, so we got a computer, we're gonna do.
We're gonna put that on hold for now till we set them.
Well, they're gonna start paying taxes. But if the other stuff's on hold?
Is the software working?
Well, they haven't had the usage of a credit card in several years, so it's not gonna, it's not gonna decrease your amount of collection on taxes. They know that they can't do it.
Has the software, has the software been installed?
No, no, it's, eh, none of it has been installed. No.
So we're paying for something that we're not using?
They've done the backups. They've not installed any modules of the software at this point.
What, what is it? About two thousand dollars?
Oh, I know that, yeah. But they're ready to put you on.
For a credit card?
Uh, for a credit card machine. I don't know what she paid it for, but I'd, I'd have to see the invoice to see.
So have y'all done bots on their computers yet?
We have not.
We've bought, we've paid twenty-six hundred dollars on it.
Everyone's approved. We paid twenty-six hundred dollars on it and now we've got this email here.
Twenty-six hundred dollars?
That somebody just sent in on Tammy, Tammy's, uh, email on Thursday, November the second. That canceled next gen software upgrade request this time due to staffing issues. I don't know who done this, but Tammy didn't do this. Somebody here in the office done this. So we got this paper from.
Oh, no, they were the third. I was, I did email and I did not let them showing up on November the third. When I was up there by myself and covered up two my eyeballs to come in and install software. To a system that I have nothing. And so I asked them to put it on hold until we could further discuss it and that's why it's on the agenda.
Who told you to put it on hold?
I did.
Frankie did, Ms. Brenda, Ms. Brenda did, Mr. W C did.
You do not have the right to do that.
I know you did, Dennis.
I know you done it, but you don't have the right.
Dennis and I have talked, we've all talked about it except for Ms. Renee and Nancy, and I just don't see it daily.
We didn't talk to him about it.
And it was to be put on the agenda tonight to discuss putting it on hold for now, just to give us time to get our head above water.
You're not supposed to go in on anybody's.
I had no choice to go.
You done this on Tammy.
It's on her computer. I had to call and get the password so I could take care of city business. Because she was not here for two weeks and those emails were not answered and there were meetings that were missed because nobody was checking those emails. So I had to call and get in that email so I could conduct city business. When somebody walks away and just doesn't show up and you've got somebody in there that's just trying to keep your bills paid and keep the city running, you have to get in those emails. And it, and it's been changed that it is, and it wasn't her email. That email is clerk@cityoriginally.com. And the day she gave you her notice, she was no longer, or the day she left, she was no longer the clerk. So that was a city email, not hers.
But did she have a password on that email?
I had to call Twain, which is our software.
If somebody got in my email, that got in my password, I'd have a lawsuit.
It's not her email, it's the city email.
No, no mail. If she had the password, she can't do that.
She doesn't have, they changed our computer software. People went in and changed the passwords.
Passwords on their email.
Right, but when it, when it.
I'd sue the brakes off somebody for doing that.
Company email.
It's a company email that had to be accessed so we could handle city business.
Okay.
There you go. Let's move on.
So you're gonna, y'all are gonna do away with the next, is that right?
We're doing on the credit card. Are, do we, what are we doing? We didn't vote on credit cards.
Just put it on hold for now. Table it.
Okay.
What are we tabling?
The credit card.
The cemetery pump, uh, Mr. Burke, is that what that is?
Yes.
Are anybody gonna take that or? We got somebody that wants that job or?
What does that, what does that job entail?
Marking the graves.
Marking the grave, keeping up with graves.
There's a more to that than you really.
Oh, I'm sure, but I just didn't know what it was, so. But they have to keep records of where everybody is buried. That's basically what it is.
Do we have to advertise it for two weeks also or whatever?
Do you pay somebody so much a month to do that and then what?
We pay them so much a month and then per grave, I think.
Two hundred dollars a month and twenty-five dollars per grave. And Mr. William McDonald has been doing it temporarily since Mr. Burke got to the point that he was disabled and couldn't. He told me that he just really doesn't wanna do it full-time because he has to come one day and mark it, the next day to dig it, the next day to bury it. He said that, he said making twenty-five dollars to come and mark a grave from neighboring, he's losing money doing that and he doesn't, he's not interested in the position.
He kinda filled, filled in for Mr. Burke when he was dead.
But now do we need to advertise that to see if somebody wants to do that?
We gotta have somebody do it. I don't know who you're gonna come up with. Whoever does is gonna have, it probably needs to be a retired person, you know.
Somebody that's got plenty of time to do it.
But, you know, you know, you can't, a worker person can't fool that. It's gonna have to be somebody retired.
Do they have, do they have to use like a surveyor thing to, to mark that off or is it already marked?
You gotta let it get your mouth.
You gotta, you gotta be able to read that map and our map is all to pieces. Uh, it hasn't been, uh, it hasn't been copied in a year, a year.
That needs to be read up.
Yeah, it needs to be read up. My brother Burke was supposed to and he, he was gonna look into it, but I thought you can copy something that big that, uh, of it, uh, uh. I thought you got something I could copy it, but I don't know.
Leave it in its state like it is and just let Nick copy it?
I got, uh, Mr. Burke's wife, when he resigned, the day he resigned, she brought his copy back to city hall. And his copy may be in better shape than the one that's hanging on the wall. I don't know. I haven't even taken it. I haven't touched him. I just got him in there.
Yeah, you don't need to fool that one on the wall. It'll come out.
No, it's, I mean, it, it falls apart if you touch it. It's so old and, and frail that it falls apart.
Getting this one that he brought in.
Okay.
The last couple of weeks I've been doing it. Then we can find somebody else to do it.
Do we know of anybody who would like to do that job? Anybody get a road?
That buddy, not me. You go on the road.
More than that, if you have to.
I think maybe we oughta advertise and see if there might be somebody out there that might be interested in it. Because in that way, there might be somebody out there that would have never thought that that, that could do it.
And we have so many cute people moving in. They might.
Advertise it for.
Like do an ad in paper or maybe put it on Facebook page and just.
Yeah, just simply to get somebody and then maybe when it's meeting, we might have to do.
So table it for now. Do an advertising, okay.
That's true.
We still got our sense, but that.
I think, uh, Mr. Goodman done the last couple. There was, there was some mix-up in the grave, wasn't there?
Yeah.
Were there?
If they fix that, then they just.
The Anderson. We had moved in.
Oh, really?
Almost.
There's, there's been mistakes made. I mean, it's not, it's not an easy job.
I know they, they did, I mean, um, she came, Ms. Mary came to the Christmas brunch and she said that when they went out there and took care of Mr. Burke. That there was some graves that needed dirt moved around, that had sunk a little bit and they, they got several of those straightened out and moved some dirt around. So they did do some cleanup out there that day.
Okay, so we're gonna advertise for someone to the cemetery?
Yes.
Okay. Frank, you can actually, you all talking about?
Well, I remember you had one, I, I told Mayor the day of dinner, uh, she called me this morning and there was one out there, uh, from using the city that was getting ready to put a, a, a stone in. We're gonna pull the slab. I went out there and made him show him where the, where to put it. And I could have asked him, we discussed two, three, four months back, uh, stones that were turning over and whatnot. I've got to tell you, it's, he, that was, that price he was quoting was also putting a concrete slab there. It wasn't just picking the stone up.
Okay, alright.
On a single, on a single stone, he probably advised today that if they came over and done it, on the stones that were falling, tilted and whatnot, needed some work. He'd do a single stone for a hundred and twenty-five and a, and a double stone for two fifty. Now that's picking it up, moving it, putting the concrete slab down, filling it in as needed and then putting it back. There, I mean, we were trying to figure out what.
And they probably took three hundred of my fair land.
Uh, there's, there's a good ten, twelve slant on the ground.
Yeah.
I mean, they, we was trying to get some numbers on it. That's the number that, that I got quoted today.
One bad, what, what I, the guy didn't show up with a dirt deal done?
Yeah, he's going to, but I mean, he's not running down.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, we're gonna have to have, I'm gonna say, I think the county's gonna haul some more dirt. Right there in that middle. And then, yeah, he's gonna do the job, but I mean, it's gonna be probably, he said the weather start, they're working some farm stuff right now.
Yeah, sure.
Probably be in March, probably February, March. But he said if he got a slack time, he's gonna. We didn't say we're getting the county to haul some dirt.
It'll be after first of the year for the county housing dirt.
Yeah, yeah.
It'll be after first of the year before the county housing dirt.
Alright, thank you.
At this time, just throwing it on the table, just strictly what the depression going is. We hire, uh, Joel. And he had not completed his ninety days and holiday gift. He thought he got a holiday pay. And I wasn't aware of the tip bill and he brought it up. The tip bill got their holiday pay the day they started. So I, I just wanted, talk about being competitive, not just throwing that in there that, that might be an incentive on some of them. But, uh, we got to say.
Your holiday pay, you start your vacation time at the same time. So you gotta back up and say, we gotta pay the girl for the vacation time and then if we're gonna pay him, the holiday pay.
Holiday pay.
This will be starting the first of the year. We'd be going back paying him. It'd be just something new if it's, if it was voted on in fact, but it's something to think about. That, that's, that's an incentive.
This leads to where it's at.
No more breaking. Everything had, I mean, we are spending hours rewriting ordinances and trying to put everything in order and set thing in order and then we break them. That is crazy. Now, if we're gonna set the ordinance, then let's set the ordinance and if, and if it says ninety days, it's what it's supposed to be in ninety days.
Said it was fine. It didn't have no problem.
Well, I'm not even talking about him. I'm just talking about.
Saying, she told me, she said, I'm fine with that.
Yes, I'm not talking about him. I'm not talking about them. I'm just talking about in general.
I just made a comment. I bring it up. It's something that I've written. Put a little chip on it up in the.
They need to leave like it is.
Yeah. It's fantastic.
Um, okay, we're free heads, free heads over here.
I, I know I don't want my name.
Yeah, I. There's a purchasing policy that was given to me that I believe was never even brought forth. I'm not sure. And I put that on the agenda and then Ms. Fred said he didn't know anything about it. So it basically just needs to be tabled or left like it is.
Okay.
But we don't, it's not like purchasing the land we were talking about.
No, no, this is purchasing policy. They, there was a purchasing policy that had been drafted up that was completely different than what's already in place.
It was drafted up for a big corporation.
Yes, but it's not for real.
Yes, it's not.
So that just needs to be tabled and let.
Tabled and left like that. And we'll see about that.
Yeah, as we did that committee.
Oh, yeah, okay. Okay, now we got the, yeah, the city's that rental and deposit. Uh, don't you think the fifty dollars, uh, that deposit is too small because it won't clean the place?
It will. We need, we need to figure out somebody that would be interested in cleaning that place up, whether it's for seventy-five dollars or, or a hundred dollars and send it at that.
We're gonna do something.
Uh.
I thought last month we did, we did raise everything. We talked about it.
I had to, and she's.
What is it renting for, Don?
Is it a hundred and fifty dollars?
Two hundred dollars.
How much?
Two hundred dollars.
Pay two hundred dollars to rent that.
And the time that it was left dirty, the, the lady that I found to clean it is in the back row. She charged seventy-five dollars to go down there and they, they, someone left food in the stove and it was a disaster down there. We had a wedding. And it stunk really bad in there and it filled the, and she went in and cleaned the stove, mopped floors, cleaned it. I mean, everything was in very, very good shape when she left and she charged us seventy-five dollars to do that.
What, what is the deposit?
The deposit right now is fifty, so we paid more out to get it cleaned than what we actually got off the deposit.
Our deposit should be no less than a hundred.
I do.
Hey, we're gonna rent it for two fifty? Is that what we're gonna do?
Uh, I don't know if you get it up to that. I don't know.
We got, another thing too, we, we gotta, we gotta get somebody up on top. We still got a leak in that one, that one room. We need to go up there when it's raining. Somebody needs to go up there and see where that's leaking, where it's running down.
Jackie thinks it might be coming through that vent.
Yes, I hadn't got up there when it was raining. I gotta get it. It's a vent in the back. If it blows in.
Yep.
Then it's gonna run down that wall. It's gonna get on that top and it's gonna run through. I hadn't had a chance to get up there and get what it was. Sorry?
That vent deals, it need to be changed or covered up?
I think it needs to be covered up because you're getting plenty of vent from the top.
Okay.
On another side. And we can try it and see what it does. I don't see where it's gonna hurt anything. And we could, we could cover it up with a board and be done with it for a few weeks.
They got some things they replaced in them, uh, parks, you know, their steel tiles. But now it's got some places that's done, it's leaking again.
Yes. I don't know what, you know, I can't tell exactly where it's coming from. It doesn't get up there when it's raining.
Right, yeah.
Of course, you're letting, it hadn't rained during the night. It just rained during the.
Most rain's heavy.
Is there a sewer problem?
Yeah, Jackie, I'll hold the ladder, buddy. I'll hold the ladder for you.
Jackie, is it a sewer problem? He's sitting there. Sewer problem. I was in there the other night. Strong sewer smell.
I haven't smelt anything.
It's, it's really bad.
Do I?
Really bad. It's really bad with the back door.
What, Mayor, what, what if we raise the deposit to a hundred dollars? If that's refundable as long as it's cleaned?
You're gonna leave it two hundred on the.
Yeah, leave it two hundred, yeah, make no significant effect.
Yeah.
Now, wait, wait a minute. It's already two hundred and you get fifty back if you have, leave it clean. So you want the deposit to be a hundred dollars?
Yeah, it'll be a hundred dollars and two hundred rent.
So you're gonna raise the rent on it too?
The rent's already two hundred.
You get fifty of it back?
No, you pay fifty dollars when you reserve the day and then when you come and pay up, you pay two hundred.
Okay, so it's two fifty now. So you're gonna raise it to three hundred?
So Frankie.
Refundable.
And then Ms. Nancy's second. Okay, let me see.
And they get, they get that hundred back.
Yes, within. If they rent it on Saturday, Ms. Brenda goes and checks it on Sunday over the weekend. She lets me know Monday morning. They got a check in a matter of day, like a couple of days. They get their, their deposit back.
And if it's not clean, we got this lady.
I could probably call her and get her back down there to get it cleaned and take it off of the deposit, yes.
Effectively?
Yeah, anytime.
Yes, I think.
So starting December, well, the people that are. So starting December, well, the people that have already rented it, the people that have already rented it, would, they've already signed and had a document notarized that their deposit is fifty dollars, so we wouldn't change them. But if someone called tomorrow to grant, then it would be a hundred dollar deposit.
January one.
January one?
Yeah, exactly, January one.
And I'll post it on the wall and the board and everything, that way, everybody will be aware. So we can use Ms. Burke to clean if it's left in a mess, and when each body go down there, clean up and call her.
Well, we heard from Chicago, they gonna have to tie you up on that, but he didn't put that picture on, you get in there.
Okay, we need to vote on the motion.
Okay, I got a second, so Mr. W.C.?
Yes.
Ms. Brenda? Yes. Mr. Dennis? Mr. Nate?
Yes.
Pass.
Okay, Brenda, the software purchase?
My thing on the software purchase is because that we have a new office girls, and they already are familiar with this, that we table this, and then bring it back up at a later time, the money's in the budget, and bring it up at a later time when they're ready to go on it.
We already got the money, so it's, right?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Just table it, table them doing the work until they're, they're comfortable with what they're doing. Cause it's, it's, it's basically, bottom line, it's the same thing, it's just doing it different way.
Yeah, right, okay.
No, I don't mean, we can use more app.
Why are you gonna continue going backwards instead of going forward?
Okay, do we have to vote on that, or we're just tabling it?
We table it, we're gonna vote on the table.
If we don't, if we don't wait commitment in, in February, it'll be up ten percent of the money. I'll talk to them. The computer people thought it'd be ten percent more money in February.
The amount, if they go this before, it went down.
Okay, alright. Now, they said it'd be a ten percent.
It's going to make ten percent.
My thinking is the girls have got so much on their shoulders right now, they don't need to deal with the new system at this time. I say at this time.
Okay, alright.
Going up ten percent by February, I guarantee it's going up thirty percent by April.
It went down from the last time.
It's the only thing, y'all don't know us.
Alright.
We got Tony Berger, new business to see.
I knew you were up, man.
What I wanna talk to y'all about is, is, uh, we lost Scott, Chamberlain's. What is the future of the city? I mean, I, I've got a couple of offers, but it's gonna take money to get them, you know, a lot of money. These big businesses. And one of them is a, a really big business, and how far y'all wanna go? Do y'all wanna go? If you don't wanna go, I died, Bert. I, I was told I could talk to them, I said, I want to read, I said, I lived through it all my life, and, and one of them is, is, it, it, it could be something really big, but, you know, what, what y'all wanna do? Y'all, I mean, Tippville will take it, put it at the pole. We done lost one on kind of that. And, you know.
Is the land available to do whatever you're wanting to do? This is.
Yeah, we gonna have. They ain't coming here for nothing, nobody moves here. You know, they love Tippville, TBA put them here, the city, the port, they didn't have nothing to do with that Sonoma coming in. It was all done by TBA, and for us to get something, it's gonna take a lot. And, you know, I, I don't wanna see all the businesses gone here, but we got two quick packs now.
Yeah.
Two quick, and two, and one of them probably could just close, the contract runs out, so. You know, we gotta, we all got, you know, come together and decide how, how we gonna move forward and, and what we want, what you wanna pursue.
What are you suggesting, Tony?
I don't know, it, you know, I, I don't know.
What's the business you're suggesting?
Well, it's confidential, see, and they don't, they don't, they don't want forty thousand people calling them. One of them is, is, is a, it's a, it's a equipment, it's, it's a parting company, it's a thing through John Deere, and this guy's, he's. His best friend is one of my really good friends, and we discussed this, and he went to him, and I got a meeting with him, and right after Christmas. You know, I don't know if they'll want the John Deere place, I don't know if they gonna want Chamberlains. You know, I want y'all to be aware that we're gonna have to move, or we ain't never gonna have nothing.
Is there land, is there lands available, Tony?
Yeah, the Napa store. Chamberlains, that's two things that's gonna be available.
Chamberlains whole thing, is, is gonna be available, the whole.
No, I ain't bought it. We, we, we wanna buy it, but, you know, the, the city's gonna, we gonna have, you know, we gonna have to do like Tippville and get in the game, or we just gonna have to.
Well, that's county, that's not even, oh, that's.
No, it's the city of Tippville.
No, there's city.
They annexed.
They annexed all the way to the port.
All the way, they got the whole.
No, no, I'm not Chamberlains.
That's, that's county.
That's county, that's what I'm saying.
So I, that's what I'm saying, you know.
But it will be suddenly go this into the county.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna hip the county, I'm gonna have the city, that's where I'm from.
Well, Evergreen is moving, right, Tony? Tony, isn't Evergreen moving?
Yeah, they already.
So what about their property down there? It's got railroad track and all of it.
No, we set up an industrial ward to try and help build businesses here in town. And when I came on, well, just not too long ago, we appointed Fred to take my position, because it'll be me and Alderman, I can't do it anymore. So we need, and Bruce is the, uh, president, chairman, or whatever.
Yeah, but you know as well as I do, Ms. Nancy, you know, when we try to, we didn't have enough people to show up to have a call meeting. You, me and you, morning, morning, sitting out here in Twillar Park, well, let's try it again next month.
But we need to get more, other people on that board that are willing to come in. Tony, would you be willing to do it? But I'm just saying, that's our biggest problem right now, we can't get anybody to say, yeah, do it, and then they won't come in.
I'd like to serve on the board.
Yeah.
But I'm on board, I can't be on another board.
Okay.
And, but I'm in a position where I get to meet a lot of people.
Right.
And I can help, but, you know, I got the contacts to get maybe somebody here, you know.
Right.
But we can't, you know, when we get them here, we can't run backwards.
No, we gotta, we gotta keep going forward.
And that's what happened before.
Yeah.
The city got involved, and then they run backwards, and then it went to the county, and then Danny threw the ball in the, in the water.
Yeah.
You know, he never, you know, he, we, we had the deal, he went from three hundred and eighty thousand dollar promise to this company, to a twenty thousand dollar promise.
Yeah.
And the deal was accepted, and we never would give them the twenty, so what do you expect?
Yeah, they're right.
You know, they, they, when I told them, they just going to O'Byrne County on Friday. They said, you don't know what you're talking about, I said, I sure don't. And then Friday, it went to O'Byrne County, and they got two over there now. But we, we gotta be able to move, and we gotta be able to show that when people come in this boardroom and say, you know, I want y'all to help me, that's, the, the ag, ag department, state of Tennessee, anybody can give a million dollars to start a business right now.
Yeah.
You can show you got to have equipment, you got to have, whatever you gotta have is a million dollars out there.
Cause I know I, well, when Bruce and I are both on the board, there are both, as he said, we were the only two that ever showed up, because both of us were trying to get things in here, and.
But if you think Marsha Mills is gonna help you down here, you bad, well, I live on Marsha's desk, she's done a lot with that port, we got a lot of businesses up there. But.
But that's up there, she.
I won't see it down here. And, you know.
I would love to see something down here.
Just a couple of weeks ago, they got the second business started up there, they couldn't get the electricity. Walked down Hall, Motel Nashville, run into one guy. They got the, they got another business started up there, so they got two Sonomas. Related to some Sonoma coming. And, you know, we're just missing out, we don't have anybody on the port authority. These, they don't have nothing.
I can tell you, Mr. Dennis and Mr. Frankie and I went to a meeting last week in Tippville. It was an economic development committee meeting, and one of the things that they did, they gave us statistics as far as like county all that's concerned, and they were going over things that, asking us like, what could help, what do you see are the weaknesses in our area, what do you see that could help our area? And I know, and this might be something that you might be interested in going the next time they have the meeting. In January, February, they're supposed to have a meeting and take all of those ideas that everybody gave at the first meeting, and try to put plans into action to help us to get grants for, because one thing that's keeping us from getting business is sewer. And, you know, to get grants to revamp the sewer in Lake County, Tippville originally, everything. Uh, but we got a lot of good information, and that might be, you might be interested in going to that and trying to see where we can go from there, where we can get more money to get things going, you know.
Well, all I'm saying is, if we don't come together and do something down here on this end, we'll be something else, because they're not gonna help us. That's a known fact. You know, they're not gonna step out and step up and say, we did.
And you know, we need to help ourselves. We need, we need to do it.
Well, financially strapped, Tony, and only money we can get in this town is in the water department.
We can't, we'll, we'll have to take the lead.
But, you know, we'd have to be, it'd have to be borrowed money, you know, there's no doubt. But if you don't stick your neck out, it's gonna.
You said still, and you got it, that's what we do.
We, we'll never be as lucky as Tippville was for TBA to put something down here unless it's a nuclear power plant. Now, we're, I'm strong in, I want a nuclear power plant in Lake County, but it won't be in the city of Ridge, it'll have to be out in the county, but it, that's, that's a thousand jobs, it's a hundred fifty thousand a year.
And what about these solar systems, are they not still in, Tony? Are they not still going to?
Well, a solar system is a thing that draws the sun.
That's it.
One and done, when you put it in, you through with it for twenty years, it's a twenty-year life span.
They say there's, uh.
So once a year, you pay Tony Berger ten dollars a tire to go out there and wash them. That's it.
But they say there's good revenue there, I mean, Danny was saying it so much.
Good revenue for the people that own the land. And, you know.
They was gonna hire a hundred or a hundred and twenty people at the very beginning to set them all up, and that was it.
As I say, it's not good for the town, but it's good for the first.
Up to three hundred people coming here and set them up, up to three hundred people.
Up to three hundred.
And then come behind me acres, Tony, you know exactly.
Right now, they're, they're gonna do two thousand acres out here, right out here.
Thing about it, the taxes coming, there's gonna be enough taxes, pay all these taxes that everybody's paying. If they, when they get it set up, they gonna start paying some big money.
Yeah.
That's gonna help.
It's gonna make an eighty thousand dollar difference in the tax game.
It's only gonna help the county, it won't be city.
Well, they still have the whole county, please, Bill is part of the county, it's part of us.
Think about it, you know, like Tony just said, they annexed all that all the way up to the port, city did. Go to, go down fifty-one, look at O'Byrne, where they annexed O'Byrne City Limits. It's a bunch of ground, and they ain't a building around anywhere, I mean, they annexed the city.
What they did there, Bruce, was they, they solved the legislature because of Memphis, Knoxville, Nashville, the major metropolitan cities here five years ago. They were going out because of the state mandating that you had to have this twenty-year plan. And you had to show growth, the only way that these big cities, what we'll do is go out there and annex. Well, when it did, the smaller areas got the holler, and they turned around, and they went in, and they passed a bill five years ago, now, that you like Horn Ridge. We're seeing growth out there, but, and then you even got it maybe out here, that area of what's not in the city, it is going back that way. But if we wanna go out there and make a proposal on annexation, we can't do it. They have to turn around now and have a referendum. The people in the area that wants to be annexed, or, or you're gonna annex, has to vote on it and pass it. We get as collectively as a board like that, we having to pass, vote to the annexed area, you can't do that.
What's our zoning board for then? Our zoning board?
Zoning, they haven't got anything to do with the annexation. Zoning hasn't anything to do with annexation. Annexation, you're, you're bringing this decision there, so they gotta pay the brothers taxes. But, I mean, unless they, they want to be annexed, and they do a proposal theirself and vote on it, you're not gonna see.
So does that have a clear from them when about?
They done it before.
Before this one, okay. If they put that, if they put that solar farm out there, then we can run our water out there and take some of that land.
Run your water out there and take some of the land, the water. The solar's gonna want water, they gonna sun it, they ain't worked on no water, they don't want no rain, they gonna sun it.
They don't want the water.